Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order, and Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Fasenelli.
President.
Councilman Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Pitts.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rosini.
Here.
Mayor Colacott.
Here. Our distinguished citizen was not able to make it to this meeting, and so I'd like to call Fred Whitaker to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If we will put our hands over our heart and pledge our loyalty and our fidelity and our service to our country, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Whitaker is one of our distinguished citizens, and as we described at his distinguished citizen award a few months back, he's a veteran of the Battle of the Bulge, and one of the guys that was, yeah. Okay.
Hey, Mayor, before you commence, I need to report out on closed session. We did discuss the two items on the closed session agenda. As to the second matter, for the record, Councilwoman Fasenelli and Mayor Colacott were not involved in that discussion because of their personal interest in it. That is all. We took no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. We'll now call for presentations, and our first presentation is the Human Relations Annual Report. I'm sorry, I don't recall your name. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name's Kushpinder Sud, and I'm here on behalf of Dr. Dr. Goprit Singh Ahuja, who is one of our board members, and unfortunately, he was called away with work, so I'm here on his behalf. Mayor, I apologize. Can you all hear me? Okay, great, thank you. I'm not going to be using this microphone unless if I need to. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, Mr. Franks, chief, and community members. I'm here tonight to report on some of the work from our nonprofit OC Human Relations. We're a nonprofit here in Orange County, serving all of Orange County for many, many decades, and report some of the activities here with our nonprofit in the city of Villa Park over the past year. And I've provided an annual report, which is for the term of July 2016 to June 2017, and the current report will be issued to you in the next month or so for the most recent fiscal year that we just closed in the June 2018. At OC Human Relations, we believe that all people have the right to live free from discrimination and prejudice and violence, so that we can provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. This past year that's highlighted in the report has not always been easy in our country. We have struggled at times to remember that we are all united by our American identity. We have seen deep divisions and strife among leaders and even our neighbors. However, at OC Human Relations, we have continued forward with the belief that we can all work together and that we can better, that we are better when we do work together. OC Human Relations believes that our mission to build understanding among diverse residents is more important now than ever. This relationship building can contribute to a sense of community in our cities. OC Human Relations partners with cities such as yours to manage challenging issues such as a lack of civil discourse, meaningful participation of all residents in a decision-making process, overcoming the mistrust that can make every police or community encounter more dangerous for both parties. Many of our programs here are provided countywide, such as our hashtag Hate Free OC, a public awareness and education campaign that was launched about a year and a half ago, which was meant and is meaning to create a hate-free environment in all of Orange County, where we bring diverse communities and perspectives together, where we promote peaceful and inclusive community where everyone can thrive. In the fall of 2017, we launched a youth-focused campaign to educate young people about hate crimes and incidences. This campaign, we called it the No Hate Campaign, which logged over 1 million impressions online in one year's time. But we would like to share the following information about the programming that we've done exclusively here in Villa Park. We mediated six cases, as well as one family mediation case, in the courts where community, where one of the individuals who are part of the cases was a resident of the city of Villa Park. In collaboration with Villa Park Police, we worked on hate crimes, and with individuals or community groups on hate incidences, which I want to differentiate. It's not a hate crime, and a hate incident is different from a crime. We documented one hate incident here in Villa Park that fiscal year. We worked together to build a sense of community here in Villa Park with residents and staff through our continual hate crime education, victim outreach, and support. In conclusion, OC Human Relations has partnered with the city of Villa Park for over 25 years. We brought together police and diverse residents together to build safe and respectful neighborhoods. We helped develop positive relations among the broad spectrum of Villa Park residents. We helped address community conflict and strife, and we helped sustain a human relations infrastructure to serve cities when crisis situations occur. We are collectively proud of the longstanding partnership we have had with Villa Park and of so many cities here in Orange County. Together, we are contributing to a safe and respectful county and building the important relationships that can be called upon in times of tension and turmoil should they come. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. By the way, one of our residents is Dr. Jacob Eisenbach, who is a survivor of the Holocaust. He's 95 years old. He was one of our distinguished citizens a few months back, and he lectures worldwide on hate and tolerance. So, thank you very much. I'd like to make, just recognize one correction to the agenda before we go on. We have with us tonight Stephen Kramer, and Stephen is going to be our distinguished citizen for September. Unfortunately, his name was listed in the agenda for today, but just to give you a little bit of a preview, I'm sure we've all heard over the past few months about the Hillside Strangler, excuse me, the Golden State Killer, a monster that murdered 13 women and committed over 50 rapes. And Stephen, if you would stand up, is the genius that figured out how using DNA evidence -- He figured out how to use DNA evidence available on social media to catch the guy, and it's, you know, very innovative. Anyway, I'm looking forward to introducing you next month as our distinguished citizen, and thank you very much for coming by this evening. We have some truly remarkable people in this city. Okay, our next presentation is from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, followed by a presentation on National Night Out by Mary Sylzel. So Sheriff, if you would give your presentation first, please.
I'm Lieutenant Patrick Rich with the Sheriff's Department. Although in the field of law enforcement, it'd be very difficult to follow up with what he managed to do all by himself, I will start my presentation here by saying, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Protem, city council members, city manager Franks, and staff of the city.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Orange County Sheriff's Department, for the month of July, responded to or initiated 390 calls for service. We issued 39 traffic citations and eight parking citations. Crimes that we handled, Part I crimes, there were three reported residential burglaries. Of those, one was an attempted residential burglary where someone's, part of someone's front door was kicked in. There was no loss, and we are unsure and do not believe that any entry was made into the home. The second incident, there was no sign of forced entry, but it was taken as a residential burglary. Someone lost their wedding ring that they were sure was inside of their home. The third incident, numerous items were taken from inside of a residence through an unlocked front door. The loss in that case, in that incident, I'm sorry, was jewelry. There were two reported grand thefts, one on the 24th of July, and that was an elderly lady whose checks and credit cards were taken and later used in an adjacent city. And then there was one incident in the 1700 block of Santiago, where a lady was at an estate sale, sat her wallet down and left it unattended for approximately 10 minutes. When she returned, her wallet was no longer there, and the loss was a significant amount of cash that she was planning on using to purchase items at the estate sale. The Sheriff's Department also had a busy month doing other incidents outside of crime suppression and traffic calls. Excuse me, I did skip over the traffic calls. There were four reported traffic collisions in the month of July. Three of those were, excuse me, two of those were non-injury. One was a reported hit-and-run, and it was very minor when the party that left the scene was notified and contacted. They did not realize that they were involved in an accident and agreed to exchange information and make things right. And then there was a solo vehicle traffic collision where someone lost control of their vehicle because they weren't paying attention, went off the side of the road, and did some damage to some poles, as well as their vehicle. On top of that, we had one of our deputies had a very nice stop in the beginning of the month, where he did a traffic stop of a subject driving through the city of Villa Park, had no tie to Villa Park, no reason to be here other than he was driving through. When he was stopped, it was learned that he was a prior convicted felon, and on probation terms, he had a loaded stolen firearm in his possession. So we were able to get him off of the street and hopefully off of the street of Villa Park. Like, I would like to think he was just driving through, but we never know what's going to happen when someone like that's in our city. So, a good observation by the deputy, and took that person to jail where he belongs. We also had the opportunity for a couple of our deputies to be next door at the library and do reading with the deputy. I heard that went very well. Unfortunately, I was on vacation, and I missed that, but they seemed to have a good time. So, they and the kids enjoyed that. Would like to see more of that. On July 4th, we were able to be part of the annual 4th of July parade in the lovely city of Villa Park. Everyone seemed to have a great time there. And thanks to the city council members and the city manager, we were also able to do some directed enforcement. On the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, we had an extra patrol car, or a team of two in the city, doing fireworks enforcement to make sure they're, to keep the use of illegal and fireworks purchased in the city, but not being able to be used until the 4th down, so that we didn't have any incidents of fires. Let me see, on, and I'm going to go to this just because it's a little out of the time, but in August, we had three events that I think are noteworthy that we need to note, make notice of, and that'll be covered a little later. The first one by Mary Sylzel, and that is National Night Out. I was very fortunate to attend that. I think we had a great showing, and I want to thank everyone, including the fire authority, care ambulance, all the local businesses, the explorers, our mart team, the Rotary Club, and of course, the Villa Park Women's League, who was kind enough to feed a lot of us who were there. That was very enjoyable, and if you want to keep cops happy, not that I'm putting this out there, but feed them. As you can tell, some of us really like to eat. Also, at the Villa Park High School, on the 21st, the day before school started, undersheriff Barnes, through his Sheriff's Safe School Initiative, was able to take 30 members of the Villa Park High School Safety Committee, teachers, administrators, school staff, and run through an active shooter tabletop exercise. Members of the city council were there to view this, as well as Orange County Fire Authority, Sheriff's Department, and the school board. And basically what this did is it took those 30 people and had them roundtable and go over their response to an active shooter event, and how they would react to that, things they can do, things that they can implement in order to help keep the kids of Villa Park High School safe in case, God forbid, we ever have to deal with one of those events. And the last event that I would like to cover was the following day, which was the 22nd, which was the first day of school. Thanks to city manager Franks, we're able to put extra enforcement out, traffic enforcement, and help the students and the parents responding to the first day of school be a little safer and a little wiser in how they got to school, dropped their kids off, and picked them up. And fortunately, it was a very successful day. So I would like to thank everyone that was involved in that. That's all I have to report, and if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On the speeding around town, we have huskies, we go at 19012, we take our huskies every day through girls' closets in the park, and there's some people blow through stop signs frequently. You guys are great, you guys are great in, 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 but you should have like some speed bumps, some nice speed bumps or something, which I, I'll talk about that in a minute. But anyway.
I know.
Speeding around town, you know, I'm telling you, sometimes.
Traffic, traffic around town, and that is one of the major problems that we have in Villa Park. We're very fortunate to live in a city where that is one of the major things that we have to deal with.
I mean, that's a cool thing, that that's only that we've got to deal with, but it is a problem. People blow through signs and stuff, and we're on Main Street, and we're on places that is dangerous.
If you have specific events, please reach out to me, you can reach out to the city manager.
From my phone, it's not like I'm starting to record this, and it'll be like on.
He will share it to me, share it with me, but if you have incidents like that, I'm more than happy to direct our deputies in the city to spend time in specific event, specific areas doing traffic enforcement.
Thank you.
As far as the speed bumps, there's a lot of issues with that, but that's up to our elected officials.
You guys are awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant.
Yes, ma'am.
I participated in your tabletop active shooter exercise, and I have to commend the Sheriff's Department for coming out to do what they did. I have to say, I was impressed with the program, the scenario that came out. For those of you who were not familiar with what they did, they had four or five groups of people, and they were separated not just by leaders, they had teachers, they had athletic directors, and they gave them a scenario, which was having a person come down the track with a backpack, a large backpack, at about 10 o'clock, if I remember correctly, which is about 10:15, whatever, about two minutes after recess. That person had been suspended from school, and if they saw them, what would they do? And they discussed it, and then it went on. And by the time we got finished with this scenario, there were several people dead.
Yes, ma'am.
He had taken hostages, and they went through and figured out what it was that they were going to do, and it was remarkable. And what I liked the most is there was such a diverse, we had some tables that said, guess what, we're not going to judge, we're going to assume the best, and then we had the next table that said, no, somebody's on the track, it's 10 o'clock with a big duffel bag, we're going to assume something's wrong. There was a lot of thought process, and I have to say, with having three children at the high school, I feel safe. And you guys did a great job, the staff did a great job. Thank you for, or you, Steve, for participating, and I look forward to having more of that there.
Thank you. That's great. And thank you for bringing that up, ma'am. And if I may say, when it comes to incidents like that, we always say, it's not the plan, it's the planning.
Yeah.
And putting together and having them plan something like that, and work through the planning process is how we all learn. The reason Villa Park High School was chosen as the first school to do that in is the fact that we have such a great working relationship with the school district, with the school, with the staff there, with the city council, with the city manager, with OCFA, and everyone just really wants to work together for the safety of the students. So that was an honor to have them be the first school that we ran this through. Thank you.
Thank you, LT.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question. Were there any citations issued on 4th of July or around that time?
No, sir, there were not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now if we could have a presentation by Mary and Wayne Sylzel regarding the 2018 National Night Out. And of course, Mary and Wayne are two of our other distinguished citizens that are present tonight.
We're here to thank everyone for a very successful 2018 National Night Out here at the Civic Center last month, and we especially want to thank Orange County Sheriff's Department for their provision of deputies, equipment, the wonderful display with the canines, and especially Anita Patinaik, who helped us coordinate it. The Orange County Fire Authority for providing equipment and personnel there. The city of Villa Park, especially Mike for our setup, and Steve Franks for coordinating the whole event. The Law Enforcement Advisory Committee for their assistance and support, and the Villa Park Community Organizations and Town Center Merchants for their participation, games, food, swag, all the things that they participated with. There was a great turnout of residents and families, many with young children, and some of them very new to Villa Park. So this provided a great way for them to meet our deputies and get acquainted with our fine city. We obtained new participants in the Villa Park Neighborhood Watch Network and in the Do Not Solicit program, both of which contribute significantly to the security of our community. Each year, the goal of National Night Out is to bring community members of all ages together to celebrate the outstanding safety record of Villa Park and to thank those who make it possible, especially by promoting respect and appreciation for the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement representatives among children and the young people who attend. With that goal in mind, each year, we encourage participants in National Night Out to sign this "Thank You" poster, to show their appreciation for the dedication of our deputies here in our small city. And it's our privilege and pleasure to present this symbol of appreciation. It's our privilege and pleasure to present this symbol of our appreciation of Villa Park to the Orange County Sheriff's Department for its dedicated and outstanding service to the residents of our city. Thank you so much.
And we would like to thank you and Wayne for leading the Neighborhood Watch Program, which has been so successful. Okay, now if we can have a presentation by the Orange County Fire Authority.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council, city staff. My name is Andy Kovacs, and I'm the Fire Services Chief for the city of Villa Park. I have a brief presentation for you tonight, but before I started that, I wanted to just report out on our 4th of July statistics. I did just email the city manager the complete report, so you will have that available to you to read. So, in 2018, 10 cities in Orange County participated in the sale of safe and sane fireworks, including the city of Villa Park. This year, we had 38 injuries, which was a slight uptick from 2017 with 29 reported. Unfortunately, most of these injuries were the result of the use of illegal fireworks. According to national averages, however, we do have a lower number of reported injuries, which is good news. In OCFA jurisdiction, excuse me, jurisdiction specifically, we had 69 fireworks-related incidents, so that's 23 contract cities plus the unincorporated county. And it appears that we did have one incident in Villa Park. From the report that I was given by the fire investigator, it sounds like there was maybe a box of fireworks that were intentionally set on fire. The good news was that there was no property damage as a result of that and no reports of injuries. I think all in all, the 4th of July was a huge success here in the Villa, in the city of Villa Park, and that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
That was great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next report is the Villa Park Library, please.
Sorry, ma'am, I'm going to do a quick presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, quite all right. Well, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to just discuss our emergency preparedness program overview, and this was in collaboration with a couple of the council members, the Mayor Protem Rosini and Council Member Pitts, as well as the city manager Steve Franks and my public safety partner, Lieutenant Rich. Next slide, please. So I want to just draw your attention to the fact that in a FEMA survey, 60% of adults have not practiced what to do in a disaster. And I think that number, to me, is pretty startling, especially living in Southern California, knowing that there is a constant threat of wildfire, like we saw just last year with Canyon 2, and just again yesterday with the holy fire, and of course, a flood, and unfortunately, the notion that terrorism could strike anywhere, even in the city of Villa Park. Next slide. So Villa Park's a population of about 5,900 with 1,900 total households, and emergency preparedness training will prepare residents for any type of disaster. And I think this next point's really important to highlight. Police and fire resources may not be available for the first 42, excuse me, 48 to 72 hours as we deal with some of the more significant or major emergencies that not only are happening here in Villa Park, but throughout the county, as both the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Authority provide regional service. Excellent. So we've developed a curriculum that will allow residents to learn the following: disaster preparedness, basic fire suppression with a fire extinguisher, basic medical operations, light search and rescue, the psychology behind disasters and dealing with emergencies, and we actually do a team event where groups are required to lift heavy objects off of trapped victims. And then we review all this content, and we actually produce a disaster simulation that all of the participants go through at the conclusion of the course. Excellent. So in partnership with the city of Villa Park, the Orange County Fire Authority, and the Orange County Sheriff's Department, we'd like to offer this program to all the residents in the city of Villa Park. The instructors will be provided by the Sheriff's Department and by the Fire Authority, and we would offer classes here at City Hall with the disaster simulation that I previously mentioned at our OCFA headquarters. Some of the basic logistical needs of the facilities, the AV equipment refreshments would be provided by the city of Villa Park. The instructors would be free of charge, and those, again, would come from the Sheriff's Department and from the Fire Authority. Next slide. I understand that the city already has gear, backpacks, goggles, gloves, and helmet that could be provided to participants of this program. We would certainly support that as well from the Fire Authority. And then through a combined media effort, we would advertise hosting this program through the city of Villa Park, and of course, the Fire Authority and the Sheriff's Department. And then on an annual basis, we would provide training as well. Really, at the conclusion of the program, we're going to have residents that are better prepared to help themselves and help their neighbors until help can arrive. Excellent. And again, in conclusion, as I stated, living in Southern California comes with its risks of earthquake, fire, flood, and terrorism, and police and fire resources may not be available. All residents should be prepared for 48 to 72 hours. Whether you attend the program or not, you need to think about food, water, clothing, medication, taking care of your pets, securing important documents, et cetera. And I think unfortunately, it's just not a matter of if, but when disaster will strike the city of Villa Park. Next slide. slide. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions from the council?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one comment, and that is that we do have a portion of the city that is in a high fire hazard area, correct?
That is correct.
And we also have a significant portion of our city that is in a FEMA-designated flood zone. So, there is a potential for disasters here just from natural occurrences.
Flood zone?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to extend my thanks to Chief Fennessey, Division Chief Kovacs, and all of the Orange County Fire Authority for putting this presentation on and for the training that is gonna be upcoming in the next month or so. This is in an effort to get around some bureaucratic entanglements and workers' compensation insurance, technicalities that have prevented the CERT program, as it used to be known, from really getting a foothold again in Villa Park. And with the partnership of the Orange County Fire Authority, the Sheriff's Department, the dedication of our city staff, we're able to finally put together some training. And I would invite all residents to give City Hall a call, give us your name, give us your phone number, give us your address, and we will look forward to working with you. We do have several members of our community that are interested, so please call, because our classes are gonna fill up quickly. Okay? Thank you.
It's very worthwhile knowledge. It's very worthwhile knowledge for all of us. I went through the original CERT program here in Villa Park, along with my wife and quite a few others sitting in here as well. And it was invaluable experience, especially in the event that something significant happens. I mean, it's day-to-day, yes, we take care of each other, but in a significant happening, it's good to have that training and that understanding of what to do to take care of yourself, your family, and your neighbors around you, because it could be a while before, you know, help gets there. So, we need to take care of each other. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great first step.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Kovacs? Yes?
Just an estimate of when we think we're gonna start the program.
So, that just needs to be a conversation that I need to have with the city manager. We just need to make sure that we do some advertising so all the residents know. But I would anticipate that before the end of the year, we should have something available to the residents.
We were thinking October-ish, October, November, we would start something.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Now for Villa Park Library. My apologies for the earlier...
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Stephanie Anson. I am the branch manager of the Garden Grove Chapman Library, but I am here representing OC public libraries and the Villa Park Library. Seems that Villa Park has been really busy this summer. We had a great renovation. It turned out beautifully. I don't know if any of you have gotten an opportunity to see it, but please stop by the library during open hours and take a look. We had an equally successful open house, and that was praised in the Foothill Century. If you had an opportunity to see the article, it was really well-written. That's in the August issue. And again, I encourage you all to stop by. Please come in. Upcoming programs for the branch, we have preschool storytimes on Tuesday mornings, September 11th, 18th, and 25th at 10:00 a.m. We have a music and movement storytime, September 13th, 20th, and 27th, also at 10:00 a.m. And we have an adult book chat, which is coming up September 19th, discussing Belcanto by Ann Patchett. And we welcome everybody to come and view our programs. I also would like to promote another upcoming program hosted by the Friends of the Villa Park Library. This is Authors and Appetizers. It's featuring authors Robert Connell, who wrote The Hindsight Project, and Maryliss Willis, who wrote A Circus Without Elephants. This event will take place on September 22nd. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Orange Assistance League Chapter House. Those interested can purchase tickets at the Villa Park Library or through the Friends board member, Monica Hellzer. Tickets are $40 each, and the proceeds will benefit the Villa Park Library. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm pleased to invite the Orange Unified School District up. Thank you again for attending and to give us an update on what's going on in our four schools in Villa Park.
Good evening. Thank you for having us again.
Pleased to have you.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. I have some of my staff here with me again, but first of all, I'd like to thank the city for working in collaboration with my staff on coming to a good conclusion in terms of the traffic flow in front of Villa Park High School. I think we have a good plan moving forward, and we're looking to the future to continue to collaborate on issues and impacts around our Measure S bond program and building at Villa Park High School. And just in kind of the theme of the evening and safety, we obviously want to make sure our students are safe, the community is safe, so the traffic flow in front of the high school is very important to us, working closely with the Sheriff's Department and looking at issues on that campus, whether it's doing safety drills or the traffic in and off, in ingress, egress on that campus. We are committed to do what we need to do as a district. So I think we have a good solution moving forward, and we're happy to work on any of the details continuing to finalize the construction. So with that, I'd like to introduce my staff. We have our Chief Business Official, Mr. Dave Rivera, as well as our Senior Executive Director of Facilities and Planning, that are here to give you some updates on mainly the track and field, because we have construction on Villa Park High School, not relative to Measure S. I want to make sure everybody knows that Measure S, and thank you very much, Villa Park community, for supporting our efforts to modernize our campuses. But the district has invested in the fields. That's a separate project. Our school district, our Board of Education, has invested funding in actually three high schools receiving a track and field that's upgraded so that our students benefit as well as the community. So we want to give you an update on the timelines, where we're at in terms of the process moving forward. So...
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. So as you may have seen off of Santiago, the track and field is in full construction mode. So we are grading down that field right now to get prepared for the synthetic track and field. And so that process of construction itself will take us to about the mid-portion of December. So we hope to have all the materials in at that time. However, we still need to put some ADA improvements, including some concrete around the skirt area near, if you walk into that track area, there's a large dirt area. Before you actually get to the track, that's going to be concrete, as well as there's going to be a path of travel from the track and field up to the office that will be improved. So during those improvements, the public will not be allowed to use the track just because of that construction going on and the liability. So, we're looking at probably, in all, 11 months of time. And I think that we talked about that the last time that we are here as well. And I understand that's an impact to the community. The community does use that track and field for events and for walking and things like that. What I'd like to offer up is Sierra Villa. We hadn't in the past opened up the side gate to Sierra Villa for residents to use, but in non-school hours, we are going to definitely start doing that. We have started doing that. I've instructed my staff to make sure that that gate is open, and that's the gate on Serrano, just right across from Serrano Elementary School. So that's a little bit of a, you know, invitation for those who do walk the track that want to keep that going. That's something that will at least tide you over until this project is done. So we're looking at, like I said, the improvement of 11 months, and then we'll hopefully have a big opening and invite some of the officials out to help ribbon-cut this amazing product that we all can use together. So, thank you very much. You have any questions about the field project in general?
I think I'm very pleased to hear. I've walked the track over at Sierra Villa also, so there are people who know that's there, because there is a group of people for years that walk in the morning.
Correct.
So that's nice to hear that you're opening that.
I understand, so I understand that once the project is completed at the high school track with the artificial turf and the, I guess, rubberized asphalt track, that will be open to the public?
It will.
Wonderful.
Well, as soon as, as soon as the, all the improvements are done, meaning the ADA improvements, yes. Yes. So it will be something that, it will be fenced in, but we will have opening for residents, yes, to use that track.
Well, thank you.
As it always has been. But we want to wait until it's fully safe and ready and all construction has been completed. So, our sports teams will be able to use it. You know, public won't have the full benefit in December, so we want to give our soccer teams and our track and field teams the ability to use that. But it's gonna be also in flux because you have the construction going on. And I just want to thank as well Steve Franks in working with us on the traffic plan as well for Measure S. It was a collaborative effort. I think when you get engineers in the room together, and they have a chance to talk things out, and we throw around ideas and have that collaborative conversation, good things happen. And I think that's what benefited in this particular case. And I think we're not only going to improve traffic flow into Villa Park High School, but also traffic flow coming and going from Sierra Villa. So it's a benefit for us, and it's a benefit for the city, and I think it was a good collaborative effort. And we'll be bringing you more information on that in the next meeting on September 19th. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rivera if he wants to make any comments.
So, the first day of school, we had 28,000 of our students show up at our school. So it's been a, it's been a project that we've been planning for all summer, and we're very proud how our schools looked. And I want to thank Mr. Harvey for all the work in preparing our schools and getting prepared. I appreciate the collaboration, the work that we're doing with the city, because we're here to serve the community as you. So we are very interested in having a partnership and doing the best that we can for our community. So, I wish you a nice evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, I'd like to thank Orange Unified School District and the, our staff, Steve Franks, and our city engineer, Akram, for working together and coming up with what I sound, what I understand is a very positive solution for both the school district as well as the city. Do I see a question?
Did I hear a comment about roaming in traffic around Sierra Villa? Is there a plan for that?
That one on Nichols will be, what that means is...
Can you step up to the podium, because the...
Yeah, I think probably, if I, I want to say, we're finalizing the plans, et cetera. So I'd want to, you know, next council meeting, we'll be presenting this. So it's kind of like a little step. I think, I think he was just trying to, please, because we present something today, and a positive, I think we were very appreciative. But I do think there'll be a lot of details when we available to the public then, including flow charts and diagrams, et cetera. So I think in context, you'll be able to see what we're talking about. I think on the fly, I hate to put Mr. Harvey in that position, so I just, I told him the 19th, and he sort of, you know, okay. So we're trying to get it all done in a way that's real positive and a very good public forum. Prior to that now, I think it's a little bit jumped early, and I hate to put him in that kind of situation, but we believe the whole traffic pattern around Taft and Nichols, and hopefully even Santiago, will be improved as a result of some of the efforts.
Can you step to the podium, please? Can you step to the podium? So...
Are we in public comment?
Yeah, just so that the residents at home can hear you.
I'm Wayne Szel. I live here in Villa Park. Eighty, 1985, we lost a couple of kids in front of the high school through the traffic. And I was unfortunately on council at the time, and we was the most difficult thing we encountered during my 10 years on council. And I wanted to ask, be very careful with safety. We need off-site loading and unloading zones for students here in Villa Park.
I think Wayne...
I just want to make sure you know that. And my question was...
The liability.
And 11, other thing is, why does it take 11 months to do the grading on the track? That's a lot of time.
It's not 11...
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
I want to make sure we understand, but the OUSD came here, the issue that we're talking about in front of Taft, it was an issue with the Measure S rebuilding of Villa Park High School and the ingress and egress going into the high school. So it is not a traffic plan. We're not looking at the traffic around Sierra Villa or redoing anything. This issue had to do with the rebuilding of the science, or the building of the science building, and how they were going to have the traffic come in and out. So I don't want to digress from what this...
I agree.
...issue is. It is not a traffic solution to the City of Villa Park. It was really isolated as to how to get in and out of the high school.
And I think...
So before we go too far...
Right. And I think if you come back on the 19th, there'll be a lot more detail on the flow of that, of that plan. No worries at all. And in terms of the timeframe, because we have to go through a DSA process, the field is...
What is DSA?
It's the Division of the State Architect.
I need to clarify too, what, if I could clarify for a second. The school district and the city are very different entities. The school has independent autonomy with on their school grounds. So for instance, so for a point of fact, and this is an issue, the city does not approve building permits or designs or anything for school grounds. So we'll never see a building inspector from the city on school grounds. He devils with the Division of State Architect, which is a whole very cumbersome process, as I understand, and a whole set of very different criteria that they have to live up to that you don't in a city. So, one of the things that's really, really important as far as you hear these projects, and why Scott is talking here, is because this is a school district project that they're doing. It is not a city project, and I think that's sort of, for the record, I want to clarify that. The city really doesn't have any say-so as long as it's on the school grounds, and they deal with any traffic that might be resulting from truck, you know, construction. But the city's been, the school district's been really good about talking about some of that stuff with us, and I think we're appreciative. But I want to clarify that what he's talking about here is a very independent process that is not subject to anything that these five council members have much say-so on. So I want to make that really kind of clear, that the city council does not approve or approve any plans on the, for the new school, the upgrade. What the city was involved with is because of the potential impacts on the ingress, egress onto city roads. So that's sort of the nexus between the two. So I just want to clarify, it's not a, it's not a, well, the city approves something wild, and the city and school district are doing their thing. It's a very sort of convoluted, difficult process, and it's, I would say, if it is putting two bureaucracies together, and it could be challenging. But I do want to say that we're appreciative of the efforts of the school district, and Scott has been tremendous, and he sat through some very tense meetings, as did the superintendent. But we really appreciate the fact that they're willing to work with us, when in some ways, you could argue they didn't really have to. So we thank you.
And I just want to add one thing. I want to thank the school district for their cooperation, coming together with us on this, and their commitment to attend all future city council meetings, to update us on what's going on with these schools, and establishing a closer partnership in what's going on within our community. I think through the leadership of our superintendent and staff, I think we've accomplished some significant things, and we're gonna accomplish a few more. And I really appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you.
I'm gonna add one more thing. The public should be going to the school board meetings. There's a lot of questions that I heard here, and those can all be answered at the school board meetings. We can't answer those. I attend them regularly. I am on the Oversight Committee. I am the chair for Measure S. Instead of asking the council or the city manager who doesn't have the answers, I highly recommend everybody go to those meetings. They're very close. They're once a month. They're informative. And if I could add, we have a great relationship with OUSD. We've had it for six years since I've been on council. It's been open, and it's not gonna change. Thank you.
And September 6th is our next board meeting?
Thank you.
So, just to throw it out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our presentations. It's now council member meeting attendance reports, and the first report is the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
That would be me. And the Orange County Vector Control District of Villa Park had an interesting experience in the past month. In July 26, 2018, I received an email from Rick Howard, General Manager, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, that said, "As you know, we have experienced a low season so far for West Nile virus detection. Prior to today, there was only one mosquito that had been tested positive for West Nile virus in the City of Garden Grove. That changed today with three new detections. Positive mosquitoes were trapped at Villa Park City Hall, El Camino Real Park, in Orange, and Underground Drain in Santa Ana." So I was surprised by this finding, since the district has had a trap in my backyard for several months with no positive trappings. So I immediately notified Steve Franks, the city manager of the findings, to contract the district to find their plan of action for this finding. The district indicated they would be notifying six or three homes in close proximity to City Hall on Monday, July 30th, and inspect in front and backyards on Wednesday, August 1st. Residents be asked to permit inspectors to enter their backyards on Wednesday between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. If residents wish to be present for the inspection, they could contact the office for... If residents wish to be present for the inspection, they could contact the office for a timeframe within a designated time. Cars will be placed on residents' front door on Wednesday, the day of the inspection, with the back card filled out and signed to indicate their permission to enter their yard. The gates should be left unlocked but not open and their dogs need to be secured by inspectors. Yards with unsecured, dogs will not be inspected. All front yards will be inspected, but backyards will be inspected only if the residents give permission in person and writing on the notification cards. After this, they will continue monitoring additional 263 homes in additional proximity to City Hall for increased mosquito activity through service requests and trappings. The city posts all this information on its website and the feeder. The city also cleaned and removed the sitting water behind City Hall that was sourced to the finding. The Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Plan was carried out without any additional findings. As an update, the district has recorded now 11 positive mosquito samples thus far through testing through August 9th. Additionally, they have recorded one dead crow from Anaheim and late July, the first human case in Orange County for the year. In addition, there was one other issue that with mosquito vector control district in Orange County. On August 17th, reported in the morning that many media outlets reported a strong petroleum order of sulfur in the air in portions of Orange County. Also on morning, ABC 7 live broadcast appined that maybe Orange County Vector Control is spraying for West Nile virus. This erroneous information generates significant chatter on social media as well on local blogs, blasting Orange County Vector Control for spraying without advance notice. Additionally, Costa Mesa Fire reported that it was definitely from Orange County Vector, akin to yelling fire in a crowded theater. Mayor Joe Coburn, as well as trustee Genesis from Costa Mesa, assisted in getting the message corrected and the Costa Mesa Fire Department corrected earlier erroneous message. District reported the fact that Orange County Vector did not and has no plans to correct any error of spraying event for West Nile virus whatsoever this time, anytime in the future. ABC News has corrected earlier erroneous report wherein the public information officer of Orange County Fire Authority was misquoted. So there wasn't no, there's ongoing investigation by the South Coast Fire Department Management District to find out the source of the order, but it was not the Orange County Vector Control District. That concludes my report.
All right, nice. There's no West Nile. Okay, well, good.
There is West Nile.
There is.
None of her.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Nelson? Okay. The next report is mine. It's the Orange County Sanitation District. On July 25th and August 22nd, I attended board meetings for the Orange County Sanitation District. And the board considered routine operations and maintenance matters at these meetings. One positive thing that was announced at the meetings was that the EPA has granted the loan that was applied for, for expansion of the groundwater recycling system. And this is a, really, it's been operating for 10 years very successfully. It's a real showcase for Orange County in terms of water conservation because basically what they take is wastewater produced from the sewage treatment plant and treat it to basically distilled water standards and re-inject it into the groundwater basin and make that available for potable water supply. And currently, they recycle about 103 million gallons per day and they're going to be expanding to about 185 million gallons per day, which pretty much covers most of the wastewater that's produced by the sanitation district. The remainder that does, will continue to go to the ocean will be the brines from the reverse asbestos treatment. I'm a water professional myself and go to a number of meetings throughout the state. And the Orange County Groundwater Recycling System that we all support is a real landmark project. And there are about 100 similar projects that are now on the drawing boards up and down the state, basically following the model that was developed by the Orange County Sanitation District and the Orange County Water District. Finally, at the meeting yesterday, or on the 22nd, Assistant General Manager Bob Jurelli retired or was given his retirement party. I've known Bob since the mid-'80s when he was the executive officer of the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. Basically, he regulated water quality throughout LA and Los Angeles and Ventura Counties. He was highly respected and well thought of there and similar for the past 20 years of the Orange County Sanitation District. And we'll miss Bob, but he's done, he did a great job while he was there. Are there any questions? Okay. Orange County Fire Authority.
That's mine. On Thursday, July 26th, at 6:00 p.m., I attended the regular meeting of the Orange County Fire Authority Board. We heard reports from the Human Resources Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, the Claim Settlement Committee, and a report from the fire chief himself. His particular report gave some accolades to our own Chief Kovacs here for his dedication and work with our fire explorers and some other programs. We discussed Fire Prevention Week. We also discussed the Urban Areas Security Initiative Grant Program Agreement to Transfer Property or Funds. And we also looked into the project overview of Fire Station 10 in Yorba Linda, which is a new fire station that's going to be built. Additionally, we went over the July 2018 legislative report and the acceptance of the 2018 California Governor's Office of Emergency Services Urban Search and Rescue Radioactive Dispersal Device Exercise Reimbursement Agreement. It's tough to say that.
Yes.
And a number of closed session items, which due to confidentiality reasons, I cannot disclose. But needless to say, it was a very good meeting and a lot was done. And we're, I think, very fortunate to be represented by the Orange County Fire Authority as it relates to fire services. We closed the meeting with board member comments and I gave thanks to our own Chief Kovacs here and our battalion chief, Ron Roberts, for providing the engine for our 4th of July parade, which was a tremendous success. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I'll move to the report from the Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No, no meeting.
No meeting? Budget and Finance?
No meeting.
City Schools Advisory?
No meeting.
Community Development?
We had a, we had a meeting this past month. It was a fairly short meeting. We did get a housing element update from John Douglas, our consultant, along with Ray. There are four or five different areas of the housing element that have been changed as a result of recent law changes. And Ray and John are working on making those changes to our overall plan, but nothing really significant came out of that from that. I mean, there's things, consultation with Native American tribes, wildland, fire hazards, disadvantaged communities, hazards and stormwater management. So, these guys are working on taking care of that. And there was no other business before that meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Friends of the Villa Park Library, I'm the representative on that, but I think our librarian gave us a good update. In particular, I'd like to, but I would like to point out that we do have a special author's night, I believe it's on September 22nd. It's a meet the author event at 5:00 on September 22nd. And this will be a special event featuring our own Bob Connell, who's one of our distinguished citizens. And he's the author of The Hindsight Project. Tickets to attend are available, I believe, here at City Hall as well as the library. And encourage you to attend. Attend, this would be a great event. Human Resources?
No meeting.
Infrastructure Management Advisory? Get my tiny notes here. On August 16th, I attended the meeting of the Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee. In addition, updates on ongoing infrastructure management projects, the committee received an update on the traffic issue, which was discussed earlier tonight, related to the plans for the proposed science building of Villa Park High School. Investment Advisory?
No meeting.
Law Enforcement Advisory?
No meeting. We'll be having one next month.
Public Safety?
No meeting.
Public Works and Engineering, no meeting. And Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
We're just continuing to do planning for, number one, the community center. We've had several committee meetings over the last, I'd say, two months. We do have some additional residents from Villa Park who are going to dedicate their time to assist us in the planning efforts. Carl Kretzenberger is, because of his construction background and so forth, has agreed to step in and give us, you know, some guidance and direction and some thoughts and so forth. So there's a few more members that will join the committee and help us try to move this effort forward.
That sounds like...
Including funding.
Oh, good.
Including funding.
Always need that. Okay, any questions? Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. So, city manager, do you have any speaker cards?
Yes, we have a number of cards. And I would just ask the speakers to identify their names and their residences, city residents for purposes of when they start speaking. Sandra Merg is the first.
Sandra Merg. 9281 Twit Circle, Villa Park. And I have a question. I would like to know why the green belt on Wanda is dying. It seems like all the schoolyards are green. Everything is green. But Wanda, is there any reason that you are not watering it anymore? And I don't know who I ask about that. The second thing is, for over a year, I've had a cockroach problem at my home. They come up out of the sewers. I was cleaning my shower and one came up by my foot, this big, and I about had a heart attack and died in the shower. And we have to keep shampoo bottles, anything over them all the time. And of course, they get out in the yards and I'm out there at night with my flashlight spraying them. And my question is, they did clean the sewer at one time and it did help, but for some reason, we have these huge, huge cockroaches. And if I leave one off, just one time, forget to put the shampoo bottle on, they're marching down my hallway. And I don't know what the issue is. I don't know what to do. I called here and they told me to spray, raid my drain. And I said, "Is there someone I could hire?" And they said, "We can't give you a recommendation." So I'm here to ask you for a recommendation or what to do because I just, you know, chasing them is not fun. And squishing them, they're really big. But we've got the hang of it now. So those are my questions for you. Thank you.
I'll handle it. I'll handle it. No worries. I'll, I'll speak to her.
Steve, I know in the past, we've had similar complaints in the past and Mike has been able to coordinate with an exterminating company to spray the manhole.
We have a regular schedule that we do the whole city. And candidly, it's just a problem that they're proliferating as we deal with it. So we, twice a year, I believe Mike is out and has the exterminator go through, but the problem is larger. And then part of the problem is that we are working on the sewers, so we're up, as we speak, we're doing some sewer work right now, so it's moving them around a bit. As for the others, the issue was Wanda. It is watered twice a week as we're restricted much further than that, but the hot weather has beaten out the grass. So at this point, that's a discussion that the council, we're kind of working on further direction from the council on that issue.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker?
Captain Eric Gleason.
Okay. My name is Captain Eric Gleason. Diana, is that your name? I don't know you, but is that your name? So yes or no?
I just would request that comments be directed to the council.
Please direct the comments to the mayor.
Okay, to the council. It's come to my understanding, I'm a captain, okay? You're the ships that drive everything in here, Samsung, LG, Hyundai's, everything out of the pack room. Biggest aircraft carriers, I drive those. That's what I want. That's what I do. Rich and Sandy Merg are the salt of the earth and the salt of Villa Park. And they're my mother and brother-in-law, to probably deny it after this, but whatever. I'm from Boston. I don't give a shit, okay? You, okay, have become a direct, like, problem here with, you've become some lawsuit or something, some malicious, salacious lawsuit with your husband who's a lawyer. Is that correct?
Please direct your comments to the council in general.
Okay. Directing to the council. Is that correct, Bob? Does she direct some, I got, I copy some lawsuit from somebody today. I'm busy. I don't have time for this. Are you kidding me? This is the smallest city in Orange County. The smallest city in Orange County. One of the richest, but everybody went to Newport Coast, man. And they left. And I said, "All right, all right." And I stayed here because of my mother-in-law and my father-in-law, who are the salt of the earth, the salt of Villa Park. And I said, "You know what, man?" And my wife was from here. And I said, "All right, I'll stay here." Because I can see the ocean or whatnot from my house. Except for the telephone poles. And I'm going, "What is the telephone poles out here?" And you people, aren't you the one of the ones that said, "You, you..."
Please direct your comments to the council.
Okay. Well, she directed something to like, "Oh, telephone poles, oh my God, like Newport Beach." I bought two properties in Dana, put them up a million bucks in the bottom in 2015 because they've been putting the telephones underground at the Laguna Beach. And now you, and I, my understanding is you that...
Please, please direct your comments to the council.
All right, council. All right, anyway, man. So you're affecting my return on investment here and I'm not happy about this, okay? This is a lot of money, not just a little money, it's a lot of money. And plus my family. I love my family. I want to be here. And my kids are in private school. How many people here are the kids in Villa Park High School or whatever? They're all in Lutheran, they're in St. John's, my kid's in Salem. How many kids, I pay property taxes and now it's capped off at 10 grand. Really, man? 10 grand? You're actually paying property taxes on my properties? Are you kidding me? And you, you, Diana, you're the one...
Please, please direct your comments...
Okay, council or whatever, whoever you are.
Calm down a little.
Dana Feinstein, Diana Stein Swine, or whatever you are.
Please.
All right, all right. I'm not being salacious. Okay, man. But she made a lawsuit against you, correct? Is that correct?
No. The city manager can, or the city attorney can correct who the...
Whatever. It's all over. I'm not putting up with this anymore, man. You are affecting my return on investment, man. You, you, it's you. You're the one that said, "No telephone poles, no..."
Okay, thank you, thank you. I think we understand. We'll move on to our next speaker. Thank you.
My name is W. Eric Gleason. I approve this message.
Fred Whitaker?
Keep your space.
The next speaker is Fred Whitaker.
Yes, Fred Whitaker, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, it gives me great pleasure to thank you for the conscientious and serious ways that you address the issues that face Villa Park. Not only issues of today, but issues that will come down the road in the future. And one of the things that you have done that has been so helpful, you have developed volunteer committees who will address issues that if not handled in a wise way in the future, can produce tremendous expense for the city. And since this is a city that is small in size and limited in resources, the wise planning on issues that could be very expensive in the future is very important to the well-being of this city. And as part of your concern for that, you have developed these volunteer committees to address specific... to address specific issues that could be big future problems. And I would like to encourage the council to have, from time to time, a committee come up before this body and, in five or 10 minutes, tell what they are doing to address possible future issues. And then invite the congregation here to send in information that they believe would be helpful. Remember, Villa Park is filled with a lot of able, skilled, experienced, and wise people. And one of the things that you can do, of course, to help the city is to use the talent that you've got in this city. And if you allow people to make contributions on issues that are of great import, it will help tremendously and can be a wonderful service. Again, I thank you for the conscientious and serious ways and the civil and professional way you address the issues of this city. Thank you.
All right, man. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, and thank you again for your service.
Donna Taylor.
Hi, this is actually, my name is Donna Taylor, and I live at 9781 Eastwood Circle in Villa Park. And this is my first time to a city council meeting, and I think I picked the right night because my topic is about safety, and I just want to thank, whether it's the city or the council or whoever approved putting up the lighted stop sign near my home, that has made a tremendous difference in the safety of me personally.
That's a great thing.
So I cross that street, and my kids cross the street right there at Lemon and Serrano all the time. I walk my dogs, I have to cross the street, and I have actually seen sheriff's patrol cars empty, but sitting there for a presence to basically promote people to actually stop at those stop signs. And because very often, they don't, and I can sit in the backyard and hear whether or not people are stopping, because I hear screeching brakes often. There's a lot of construction that happens up in the hills, especially with homes, a lot of people modifying their homes. And so you've got people unfamiliar with the stop signs. And that one in particular, I think because you're coming down the street or people rolling through, and there's multiple stop signs on Lemon, that people disregard, or they just don't know that they're there, and they fly through. I have personally almost been hit, like, and I mean within feet, I had people witness flying, people flying through the stop signs. They just don't stop. And I have noticed by sound and by my own personal experience walking through there, that it has made a tremendous difference. So I appreciate, they don't need to be everywhere, but I really appreciate that they're there, and I think it's made a big difference. So thank you to whomever came up with that idea. It was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Donna Buxton.
Good evening, Mayor Colacott, city council members, staff members, and residents of Villa Park. This right here is a lawsuit that was filed by councilperson Fasenelli against our city manager, Steve Franks, Mayor Colacott, and the Orange County Register of Voters. This suit essentially claims that Mayor Colacott's filing documents declaring his intention to run for office were not completed and processed properly, and hence, Mayor Colacott should be removed from the ballot in the upcoming election. This is yet another in a series of personal and professional attacks against Mayor Colacott by councilperson Fasenelli that has gone on for four years. Upon coming to office, Councilman Colacott discovered that councilperson Fasenelli was not reimbursing the city for her health care policy, effectively letting the city pay her family's bill.
How much was that?
Councilman Colacott had a fiduciary responsibility to disclose this matter to the residents of Villa Park. Since that time, councilperson Fasenelli has been relentless in her attempts to block any initiatives supported by Mayor Colacott and has turned the city council into a platform to unleash her personal vendetta against Mayor Colacott. I believe that Mayor Colacott, along with Mayor Protem Rosini and former Mayor Nelson, have been of the most forward-thinking and proactive councilmen we've had for, working for our city for as long as I remember. Let me just review a few accomplishments. I'm not done yet. Let me just review a few accomplishments that Mayor Colacott has brought to this city. He championed the creation of LIAC, the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, which has worked with our sheriff's department to improve the safety of our community. This group is also credited, in part, for the resurgence and tremendous success of the Neighborhood Watch Program led by Wayne and Mary Silzow. Villa Park is one of only two cities in Orange County that enjoyed a decrease in crime in recent years. He's been instrumental in addressing many infrastructure issues, such as the creation of the Infrastructure Management Committee, taking advantage of highly trained and professional infrastructure resources right in our city to advise staff on identification and prioritization of infrastructure needs. Villa Park now has a storm drain map, which previously did not exist, the information from which is now being fed into our infrastructure planning. He has been a major proponent of increased street maintenance and additional budgeting for our streets. With Mayor Protem Rosini, Mayor Colacott led the emergency response coordination for a major storm drain collapse last year at Henderson and Mesa. In that effort, they stayed on-site practically all weekend and engaged Todd Spitzer and the county Public Works Resources to prevent flooding of that neighborhood. He's championed the selection of city manager Steve Franks, who has been a tremendous asset to our city. He drafted extensive city comments regarding residential development in the Orange Park Acres area that would have had a tremendous impact on our city, one of which was an estimated 73,000 truck trips on Villa Park Road, creating safety hazards to students and other pedestrians, additional traffic noise, and degradation to our roads. He was instrumental in instituting additional safety measures to protect student pedestrians, including installation of crash bollards and additional curb markings and crosswalks. As you can see, Mayor Colacott has been focused on critical, basic needs for our city. He isn't fighting for funds to fancy up the city hall or to upgrade our green belt. He, along with Mayor Protem Rosini and Councilman Nelson, have been focused on making sure our critical needs are being addressed. In November, we have four candidates running for three council seats. Could this complaint be an effort to deprive Villa Park voters of the option to allow Mayor Colacott to continue in his strong history of improvements for our city? Could this complaint be an effort to cloud the legitimacy of Mayor Colacott's candidacy and slander his reputation? Could this complaint be a misuse of the legal system in an attempt to keep Mayor Colacott off the battle ballot, thus securing a seat on city council for Councilwoman Fasenelli? It is not for councilperson Fasenelli to decide who is on city council. It's up to us, the voters of Villa Park. It's been confirmed to me that defending this action is not covered by the city's retainer for legal counsel. This means that we, as taxpayers of this city, are paying for this frivolous lawsuit to be defended. Meanwhile, it's costing councilperson Fasenelli nothing because her husband is a lawyer. We, the citizens of Villa Park, have been watching this nonsense for four years. I speak for many people today who are embarrassed by what happens in this chamber. At this time, I would like to ask anyone in the audience tonight that condemns this legal action and supports the work of Mayor Colacott and city manager Steve Franks to please stand.
I would just...
Hey, man!
In the upcoming election...
I would just say, five minutes, we're at five minutes.
I'm wrapping up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
In the upcoming election, the residents of Villa Park have an opportunity for their voices to be heard, that our hidden jewel has had enough of this pettiness, chaos, and wasted time and energy. Let's get back to letting our city staff and our city council do the work of the city and put this ridiculousness behind us.
All right, nice, man.
Thank you very much.
Nice.
Okay, next speaker.
We have no other blue slips. I don't know if anyone else is here to speak, but we have no...
May I speak, please?
Could you just hear name for the record?
Arlene Springing, Villa Park. I noticed on the agenda, may I speak to the city attorney, please?
Um, yeah.
I noticed on the agenda here that it says significant exposure to litigation in dollar amounts. Could you tell us what that means?
There are two items on the closed session agenda under the Brown Act, which is the law that governs, no applause, please, about the Brown Act. Under the law, under the Brown Act, you have to list certain items before you can go into closed session, which is in the back room and talk about those items. They're deemed to have a certain amount of confidentiality. The first item you're talking about, significant exposure to litigation, we don't put what that item is about, because even putting that out there could be unhelpful to the city on the matter. So that is something of and by itself. The second item is the item listed on the agenda. I don't have any cost information to share at this time about anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So any other speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is the public hearings. And the first is the waiving of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. City manager, can you give your staff report?
Item number three is the end, the monthly meeting that we basically waive the reading of all ordinances, resolutions, and meeting minutes, just simply to have the city clerk to read the title only of the subject. This is to get an expeditions meeting, an efficient meeting each week. At this point, it's, we recommend approval, but it's sort of irrelevant in that we don't have any public hearings. So it's a routine item that isn't really all that applicable tonight, but we'd recommend approval for the sake of austerity.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Second.
Steve, would you please read the results?
It passes by a vote of 5-0, and for one time, I'm ahead of twee.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item number eight.
Item number eight. Are there any others? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the others?
I'm moved to approve of the remainder.
Second. So motion, or motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes by a vote of 5-0, and she's ahead of me again.
Okay, thank you. We'll now take up the other items, or the other item that was pulled for discussion, and that is item number eight, designation of city representative to Bridges at Kramer Community Advisory Board.
As you mentioned, that is a designation. The County of Orange has invited all of the cities in the North County service area, and I can list them all, but it's a numerous number, but to basically have a, to participate in a community advisory board on the Bridges at Kramer Place County Home and Shelter, which they're required by law to have. Larry Haynes, the director of the program, the contract provider, reached out to me and indicated that he was looking for someone, and he expressly spoke to, I believe he spoke to Councilwoman Fasenelli. The advisory board is intended to review shelter operations, work, listen to community input, gather, basically receive an address information, recommend anything that procedurally should be addressed by the contractor. It meets biannually, and special meetings be called. Their composition is 19 voting members, and I can, they're listed in the staff report, many too numerous to say. The representatives serve at the will of the entity that appoints them. So each city in the North Service Area has the responsibility of appointing them, and they are on that until the appointing entity removes them. They do not provide for alternates or delegates in the recommendation. Councilwoman Fasenelli has expressed an interest. I know she's familiar. Larry Haynes is familiar with Councilwoman Fasenelli, so it's been my recommendation that she be appointed to this committee to a date, to a subject to approval by the city council.
Are there any questions or...
Excuse me. I pull this item because I believe someone's going to be appointed this. Should be someone we can be assured is going to be on the council for next year. And since there's only two people that can be assured of being on the council next year, one is Councilwoman Rosini, and I'm nominating, make a motion to nominate Rosini for that position.
A second.
It's not yours, a second.
Please.
Just for a point of record, it does not need to be a county, I mean, a city. It is a delegate of the city. It does not need to be a city councilperson on the committee. So that's just a point of clarification, so everything's on the table.
I still have the same motion.
I would like to talk on this. I've expressed interest to you in the past about the homeless issue and mental health issues facing the county, and have worked hand in hand with mental health services within the county, other professionals, and have seen the epidemic firsthand professionally. This is something that frankly is near and dear to my heart, and I know the problem quite well. With all due respect, I appreciate Councilwoman Fasenelli's interest in this, and I commend her for that, and I think that she should continue to work with the Mercy House, operator of the Bridges at Kramer. But I concur with Councilman Nelson on this matter, and if so chosen, would gladly accept the opportunity.
Is that a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Then moved and second.
So you do, it is an agenda item which was pulled, so we have to go to the public if there's any...
Okay, so there any comment from the public on this agenda item? Okay, hearing none?
I have a comment for the records. Larry Haynes did call me because he, that was his preference, because of the work that I do outside of this council, which this council, other than Councilman Pitts, has not done any work for the city when it comes to homelessness or to those who are impoverished. Okay, no one has done that for the city, and...
What have you done, sir?
So...
Please do not interrupt.
That is my comments, that they had called, and they wanted me to be on that, and I commend Mr. Franks for actually concurring with that. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, please vote.
So what are we voting on?
The motion is for the appointment of Mayor Protem Rosini to represent the city of Villa Park as a city representative on the Bridges at Kramer Community Advisory Board. The vote passes by a 3 to 2 with Councilwoman Fasenelli and Councilman Pitts voting no.
Our first item of new business is the Inspection Construction Management Services Contract for the Mesa-Henderson Storm Drain Replacement Project. Staff, please give the staff report.
As you recall, we approved a contract earlier this summer for the construction, repair of Mesa-Henderson Storm Drain. I'm pleased to report that work will begin next week on that factual repair, and we are having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. With that in mind, one of the things we've talked about, because of the number of projects we have going and the ability to have a construction manager on-site at all times, we've decided to go out on the major projects with a construction management contract, and we built that into the project cost. So we went out to bid, we solicited bids from five entities, we received one bid from NV5 in the amount of $83,000. And they are, since, as for full disclosure, NV5 is our contract provider for engineering services. So I reviewed the bids, I prepared the recommended, the bid, and I believe it's responsive, and it's for $83,000, so I believe that it's recommended to move forward. It is, including the $83,000, is well within our budget that we set aside for this project. So we would like to get started on it and have the construction manager on-site tomorrow, but that's subject to city council approval this evening.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
I had a couple of questions. One was, when we approved this project, we had a number in there for the construction management. Do you recall what that number was?
Yeah, we had, I don't know the exact number on the top of my head, but it is, the total project is, I want to say, including construction, several hundred thousand under what we had budgeted.
No, no, I know, because I think the project itself came in under.
Yes, the actual contract manager is going to be more expensive.
Is it typical, like, 10% for management? Is it typical, like, 10% for management?
It is probably 10%, roughly, so I want to say... I don't want to venture a guess, because I told Akram that he didn't need to be here tonight, and I'm going to be sorry for it. But I don't...
I'll ask you offline.
Okay. But I believe it's an appropriate move because we believe as a qualified project manager and can be onsite every day that there's operation going on there, which is what we want, to make sure it's done correctly.
No, I just thought this normally 10%, and I thought this was a little higher than...
It is slightly higher, but at the same time, it's the only bid we received.
I wonder by what... Why do we only receive one bid? Do you have any idea?
You know what? There's a lot of projects going on right now, and candidly, it's difficult. Both this project and the next, we contracted out, and we bid to... We sent out bids aggressively to a number of different firms, but limited number. Candidly, the $83,000 is not a lot of return on somebody spending the amount of time they're going to be doing. So for the amount of time that we're going to ask of them, it's a pretty significant commitment on their part. So a lot of firms, smaller, aren't going to take this because it's just the drain. So very candidly, I think that's where our assessment is.
Okay.
Steve, I had a question. What do we anticipate the timeframe to complete the project?
Forty-five days.
Okay. So some pad built into this, being sixty days to do closeouts and those kinds of things with the project?
The $83,000 is all-inclusive, regardless of how long it takes.
Okay. So we won't see change orders?
Not for this. If there...
For whatever reason.
The construction project should... What happens typically is any change order from the project would have to come through this person.
Okay.
And so that's the key. They're onsite, they know what's going on. But we don't anticipate any change to $83,000. On the project, you always anticipate there could be some as-built issues that we come across.
Right.
But like I say, this $83,000 is a locked-in amount.
No matter the duration.
It is a project total.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just a question or two, and just confirming, when you're stating onsite for residents at home, we're talking on a daily basis. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, they'll probably be... It'll be our expectation that every day that there is construction, this person will have somebody out there at some point during the day. Maybe not watching them every shovel full, but...
Right.
On-site, checking progress each day, measuring, seeing what's happening...
Okay.
And any sort of issues that might be developing at the time.
Because it is a complex issue, very complex.
And I... This is important. It is important. It's taken us a long time. We want to make sure we're doing it right, quite candidly.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to make one comment. I reviewed the files for the cannon wall failure, at least the first failure, and the problem there was poor construction. We went... We decided to go cheap and not hire a construction inspector, and we got what we paid for. I think the cost of that failure was about a half a million dollars.
I thought FEMA paid us for that.
Pardon?
Didn't we get reimbursed by FEMA?
The damage was still there, and public funds were expended. Anyway, I'd like to commend staff for taking this approach towards making sure that we... That things are constructed properly. Hopefully, when the storm drain goes in, it will last for many decades, and we'll get good service from it because we made sure it was built right in the first place. So... Anyway, any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay.
I'll move approval of the recommendation then.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes by a 5-0 vote. Item number 10, if you love the last one... If you like the last one, you'll love this one because it's even cheaper. But it is, again, a construction management for the street rehabilitation project. I will be reporting that next... The RJ Noble will be beginning work, latter part of next week, the week after, the week of, or the week after Labor Day. So we're moving forward. This is a construction management firm, $49,000, and this is well within our 10% budget. Again, unfortunately, we only had one bidder, so... And that bidder is onward engineering. Onward engineering is familiar with some of our other projects we've done here, so we're very pleased because we have good experience with them. So we're... I'm pleased that we're moving forward with this, and I'd recommend approval.
Okay. Any discussion? Or any questions? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on the item? Okay.
Who is onward engineering?
I think the city manager just described who they are.
Who's the owner?
I...
Step to the podium. We can't... The audience can't see him.
Who is the owner of onward engineering?
The answer to that is Maji Ataya, the president of... He's the president.
Maji Ajaya.
Ataya.
Okay. I totally trust him. Okay. We're good.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the public? Okay. Do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'll move this matter.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Passes by a 5-0 vote. Item number 11 is the information from the city manager report. I don't know if she's still with us, but Alexa Flores, I'd just like to report, is our new intern. She's here. She is coming back from just finishing an internship in Washington, D.C. She'll be working with us. He's a senior at Cal State Fullerton, I believe.
I'm junior.
Junior, okay. So she'll be with us longer.
Yes.
But anyway, she's working, and you'll see her in the office, and she'll be replacing Eileen Doe. So we're getting a good, constant flow of young help... Help people, future professionals, I guess, I guess is what I'm saying.
Welcome on board.
Welcome, and thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
She aspires to be an attorney, but we're going to discourage that.
Yeah. First kill the attorneys.
I would offer that the report is inclusive. You'll see red where changes have been made in the narratives. I would comment that a number of projects, I wish we had been able to complete a little bit more, but a number of things have taken our time over the last couple of weeks. With that in mind, I'm here to answer any questions, and certainly we can get back to anything that staff are not here that we can certainly get back to.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Steve, I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Are we finished in here with...
No, we're not. No, we're not. We have a wall that we're still working on, sir, and I think that's where you're going.
No.
We are going with the wall, but candidly, we had an idea, and we're working with the designer, and we wanted to put some emblems up from the law enforcement, from the military services. But there's some patent rights that we unfortunately came across that we had to stop our bid on that, so our process. So we had to kind of rethink that a little bit. But there'll be a tribute to the military on the one side, and then a tribute to the past councils on the other side. So we're working still forward on that, but we're trying to make them consistent. So if we have to change one, we had to change both. So we're kind of back to the drawing board a little bit. There'll be some other changes in here. We have some monies that we set aside in the budget, you'll recall. We'll be replacing the pull-down 1960 screen with a... The digital screens on both sides that will be Bluetooth compatibles for those of you who have to do presentations in here.
And will have to use a stick.
You will not have to use a stick and the cables. We also be putting in larger screens. I know the Councilwoman Fastinelli would like larger screen TVs with higher definition, so we'll be putting those in. Hopefully, that we can do that. A number of things we've done that you can't see. We have insulated this building on the front part of it, which never was insulated. So it has been completely insulated. So we... You'll notice it'll retain the cool air during the summer, and the winter retain the heat, and hopefully, we'll have a return in an investment that preserves that. But that was one of the things we found is we're... To replace our air conditioning would be $25,000, just to replace the compressors. So we decided we could extend the lifespan if we did some $4,500 insulation effort. We will be doing a number of other things in here. We'll be... It's time for some of these tables to be replaced because they have such wear and tear on them, that we'll be moving forward on that. And I want to say that we'll probably be doing, you know, painting to freshen up the building, the interior here in a time. And I think some of those floral arrangements on the wall, although they're attractive, have outlived their beauty. So they'll be replaced at some point, and we'll be doing some minor things like that, and hopefully, getting some of the stains out of carpet.
One last thing. Would you do us a favor as a council? Would you please extend our best wishes to Rich and a speedy recovery?
Yes.
Tell him we wish him well, and we're thinking about him, and...
For those... Just what he's talking about is Rich, our maintenance worker that you see out in the streets, has not been out in the streets for the last several weeks. He has some health problems, and I don't want to kind of describe them, but they're very serious and something that he needed to take care of, so he's out of the office. But you'll see him around town because he can't resist coming downtown and seeing us. In fact, if you come down every morning, he has breakfast at Rockwell's if you want to talk to him. But he's not able to work under doctor's orders.
Greasy foods.
So Mike is doing a one-man show. So if you do have problems, and Mike is a little slow in getting out there, it's not because he's aging, it's because he's got a lot going on. Mike is never going to age.
Yes.
It's true.
Anyway, so I will certainly do that. I know Rich will appreciate hearing from you, and I'm sure he'll be glad to talk your ear about it if you want to hear some.
And thank Mike, too, for stepping up and taking the load. We appreciate that, too. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now it's time for you to hear individual council member information items, starting with Councilmember Pitts. Do you have any reports or comments to share?
Just a couple of things. I attended National Night Out. It was a great event. Thanks for the organizers and everybody that put it together. Thank our partners for all the things that you did. I also would like to extend my thanks to the Villa Park Women's League for the fine meal they fixed for everybody out there. I heard a lot of compliments, and we're a lot of hungry folks out there on the street. So appreciate that. Thank you. Please extend our thanks to the entire Women's League for doing that. I kind of gave an update on the foundation earlier, but we're still continuing to do a lot of planning for the community center. We're still excited about it. You know, we've got some additional committee members that are coming in to help us develop the overall plan and the funding mechanism to fund it. So we're still excited about that. We're still moving forward with that opportunity. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Nelson?
No.
No comments? Councilperson Fastinelli?
Nothing.
Nothing to report? Councilman, or Mayor Protem Rossini?
Good evening. I do have a few things to report. Bear with me. I'm going to restate a few things here, but also touch on a couple of new issues that I think are going to be welcome additions to Villa Park and as we go forward in things. On July 26, I attended the regular monthly meeting of the Orange County Fire Authority. On August 2, I attended an elected official's breakfast, excuse me, with Mimi Walters. That was a well-attended event. Got to see the mayor, excuse me, the mayor there, and a number of colleagues from different cities. She provided some valuable information, and I appreciate her making herself available to do that. On August 6, I met with Dr. Gunnmarie Hansen, the Orange Unified School District Superintendent, and began what can be described as a framework, a framework to set up a new program where the city of Villa Park, in partnership with the Orange Unified School District, recognizes an outstanding student and an outstanding teacher once a quarter so that we really work together to improve Villa Park. And unless I'm mistaken, we'll beginning... We will begin with a Villa Park High School student. Hopefully, it gives them a little bit of a push during it with their applications and getting into a good school. And recognize the fantastic efforts that our school just is doing in educating our kids because their successes are our successes. I also received assurances from Dr. Hansen to continue to work together on traffic matters, and I thanked her for her work. That was actually on a later meeting. And it was just a wonderful meeting, and she was very appreciative of that. We also discussed a monthly attendance, either by herself or her staff, so that during the process of rebuilding the high school, we can work in very, very close partnership with her and her staff to make sure that if there are any hiccups, our residents have a vehicle if they are unable to get to the board meeting or are unable to have them directly answered by staff. On August 7, much like my colleagues, I attended the National Night Out. I want to thank the Orange County Sheriff's Department, of course, Orange County Fire Authority, other county stakeholders that attended, our businesses within the community that donated resources, the Women's League for a fantastic spread. I was not able to enjoy it because I would have been in trouble at home. My wife made me some dinner, so I had to hold off, but it did look delicious. And I want to thank you, everybody who came out. I think the staff did a fantastic job, and I think the community was well-represented. And of course, a big thanks to Wayne and Mary Sillsell on that. On August 22, I met with Division Chief Andy Kovacs, and we toured Villa Park along with... Forgive me. What is his title again?
The Assistant Fire Marshal.
The Assistant Fire Marshal to identify high-risk areas within Villa Park and that surround Villa Park in an effort to prevent fires, to mitigate brush areas, to try to start, to stop things before they start. We do have some areas that are immediately adjacent to the city of Villa Park that frankly, we don't have any control over, but that would directly impact us if there is another canyon-to-fire, if large embers do cascade through the air and could start something very significant in Villa Park. Our efforts, I think, are going to reap some significant dividends in the future, and I want to thank Chief for setting that up. It took a couple of months for us to do it, but we got our schedules together, and we made it happen, and I want to thank him for that. On August 27, I met again with the mayor and Dr. Gunnmarie Hansen and finalized the plan, the outstanding teacher and outstanding student, and thanked her again for her coordination, cooperation, and the cohesive nature in which things were handled with the traffic matter